Okay.
Good evening.
Oh, you're with. All right. Thanks, Mayor. It's six o'clock and I'll call this meeting to order, which is a very unusual thing for me to do. And if you would all rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
It was habit, Peter, sorry.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the public which has one object under God.
Okay, thank you. And the next thing is for a roll call, but I don't.
I'll get it, Peter. We'll start with Council Mayor Johnson in a second.
Yeah.
Counselor Newton. Counselor Novak. Counselor Montague.
Yeah.
Counselor Kopczynski.
Yeah.
Counselor McGee. Counselor Smith.
Here.
Okay, I'll go to Planning Commission or Clay Commissioners. To Bunch Jr.
Good evening.
Bartholomew. Kunsaker.
Here.
Riles. I apologize if I say this wrong. Verba.
Present.
Okay, Nepherud. Cardoza.
Present.
Miller.
Here.
Green.
Here.
All right, and then Budget Committee Brenneman.
Here.
Berning.
Here.
Hanson.
Here.
Taylor. Summers.
Here.
Bach.
Here.
And Lucy.
Here.
That's it.
Thank you, Kendra. It took me by surprise, but you're out there virtually.
Yes, I'm upstairs.
Thanks for doing the roll call. All right. Good evening, Mayor, Councilors, Commission members. Thank you all for attending this evening to hear about the city's capital improvement program, or CIP. This is a biannual. Now it's a biannual meeting, used to be annual, the purpose of which is to communicate the most current revision of the program, the Capital Investment Improvement Program, to our stakeholders and to answer your questions. The CIP is an important part of our long-range planning process, and it helps the city plan and prioritize investments and reinvestment in the city's infrastructure. The city has limited resources, as all of you well know, and good stewardship of our infrastructure requires planning and prioritization. The CIP uses a five-year planning horizon and is guided by the city's strategic plan and by public input. It is both a planning tool and a way to communicate with policymakers how those limited resources will be allocated to the city's continually growing capital needs. Every year, city staff apply resources against the highest priority needs for capital investment. The CIP provides a schedule for anticipated projects over that five-year planning window with the projects identified in the first two years, in this case fiscal year 2024 and 25, included in the development of the biennial budget. It's developed in coordination with all city departments responsible for capital projects, including fire, police, parks and recreation, community development and public works. Additionally, the CIP includes a community needs section that identifies major needs in Albany that do not have a dedicated funding source. These include a training facility for the fire department, emergency communication systems, and the backlog of parks and streets that require repair and maintenance. Jeff Babett, the man behind the CIP, sent the document to you for review on March 13th. And in order to save copious amounts of time and materials required to print hard copies, the document was sent as a PDF attachment. There are some printed copies over here on the table if you need it. Hopefully, you've had a chance to look at it, if not to digest it fully, and hopefully you've had a chance to forward any questions you might have had to Jeff. This morning, he resent the draft CIP along with an agenda for this meeting and the questions that we've received so far, along with the answers to those questions. The document is divided into eight main categories: community needs, accessibility, parks, public facilities, revitalization, stormwater, transportation, wastewater, and water. And each category addresses a major infrastructure service provided by the city. Each category has a list of funded projects, but the identification of a funding source is not a prerequisite for listing a project. Typically, there's an even longer list of unfunded projects. Lists of unfunded projects document those needs which await identification of funding. They reflect real needs of our growing city, and they'll have to be considered as the urgency of their need increases. In the CIP, policymakers and citizens can see needs that are on the horizon. The anticipated project costs in each of the major categories over the next five years are estimated to be about $68 million, made up of funding from many sources, including systems development charges, SDCs as we call them for short, revenue from water and sewer rates, state gas tax monies, the general fund, and various grants. SDCs are the primary means by which additional infrastructure is funded. And absent SDCs, that burden of paying for growth would fall on ratepayers with increased rates or deferred maintenance. Albany will continue to grow in the years ahead, and our generation has the responsibility to make sure the city is ready to meet the needs of future citizens and to spread the cost of building that infrastructure as fairly as possible. The costs of growth and the costs of aging infrastructure are unavoidable. But city staff are always looking for ways, innovative ways, to close those gaps. Staff identify and secure alternate sources of funding wherever and whenever possible. And this CIP, for example, includes $2 million in grant funding and $4.1 million in state transportation block grant funding. In developing the CIP, staff use objective analysis and their sound professional judgment to identify and prioritize funded projects. The structure for tonight's meeting will include an introduction from city staff for each of the major categories, followed by questions and discussions from council and the board members. The CIP is also available for the public to review and comment on prior to its adoption. So tonight, we're going to start off with Stacy Bel Castro, our city engineer on community needs. I'll turn the mic over to Stacy.
Thank you. And good evening, councilors, mayor, Budget Committee members, and Planning Commission members. I guess before I get started, did anybody need a paper copy of the CIP that didn't have one on the dais? Would you like? So the the community needs section of the CIP historically is a section of the CIP that highlights projects that benefit the entire community, but they don't necessarily have a funding source identified. Peter, City Manager Trozen already mentioned a number of the community needs identified in this section. What I would like to highlight is there is a silver lining. If one were to go online and look at past editions of the CIP that are all available online, a number of the community needs that have been identified, such as our fire, downtown fire station, the police station, the riverfront lift station and horse mane project, the establishment of a stormwater utility, those have all been completed. And and so I just wanted to highlight that that although this section does identify needs, that we don't have funding sources in, we do do look for funding and and we have had some success. Are there any questions?
Maybe it's too early to ask, Cherry, but I'm not clear how AMPO gets involved in different, you know, funding and and does it happen just in 2023, the current year? Does it go on all the way out? Because I didn't see where there were AMPO involvements in, you know, as it went out into the other years.
There is funding that AMPO reviews and approves as part of their technical board that's included in the transportation system of the CIP. Albany Area Metropolitan or Planning Organization. So that is a group that was developed once Albany hit a population of 50,000. Were required to have a regional transportation committee that reviews the allocation of funding, federal funding that the state receives. And then they distribute to members of AMPO, which includes Lynn County, Benton County, the City of Albany, City of Tangent, and the City of Jefferson and Millersburg. And so there are some funds that AMPO reviewed and approved in the transportation section. They're labeled differently this year. They're called, I think, state transportation block grant funds. And I think there's approximately two point, I'll have to look. See. $1.9 million that have been allocated towards the Queen Avenue project. Any other questions? No. All right, I will move on to the accessibility section of the CIP. This is a section that isn't specific to Public Works. Meeting the Americans with Disabilities Act requirements is a citywide endeavor in Denver. The section of the CIP does only identify one project. It's called the Accessibility Program. It has funding of approximately $150,000 per fiscal year. These funds will be used to remove barriers in the right of way. These are projects that were identified in the recently completed transition plan that Public Works completed for our right of way. The funds can also be used to address citizen complaints that we receive. An example of this is we installed auditory push buttons at the traffic signals on Hickory Street near Bonaventure and on Queen Avenue. A citywide ADA transition plan is underway. Our library director, Eric Iconow, is managing this project, and it probably will be completed by the end of the year. So two years from now, this section of the CIP will likely have a list of funded and unfunded projects that are identified during that in Denver. Any questions?
So are these are the projects that are planned for next year prioritized by use or by location? Is there any that you're done yet?
There is a prioritized list of projects that were identified in the transition plan. These are high priority projects, ADA ramps, crosswalks, sidewalks. Those improvements will will be done.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Stacy for accessibility? And if not, we're joined online by Kim Ledain, our Parks and Recreation Director, and she'll take the next section, Parks and Recreation.
Hi, good evening. Can you all hear me fine? All right. Thank you for the opportunity to present virtually. So yes, Parks and Recreation. As you can see, our CIP list is a little bit shorter than I think we would like. But as you've read through the document, you can understand that our deferred maintenance backlog is significant and that the reason why is because we've had insufficient funding for a while. So things, projects that we're going to be working on in the future, playground replacements, updating inefficient irrigation systems, problematic ball field lighting systems, crumbling walkways, parking lots, and updating and replacing park amenities are all still out there. It's just a matter of trying to figure out how and when we are going to be able to get them done. Our 2021 master plan noted a lot of these challenges and said that without additional funding sources, our ability to address this deferred maintenance is going to continue to remain slow and steady. I am thankful for the city services fee as that has allowed us to to move forward with projects that had been on the back burner for many, many years. An example of a win from this past two-year cycle is Henderson Park, which has been completed, and that was on our CIP for a while. And then coming up, hopefully, by the fall, we'll have completed Meadow Ridge, which will be another one. So yes, on our list, you can see we essentially have a few projects. Meadow Ridge Park Development, that is a 1.8 acre park on the east side of I-5. It has been in development or talked about for about 15 years. We are getting ready to go out to bid for it. You'll hear us come back hopefully to get a contract awarded sometime in May or June with hopefully construction to begin in July. That project is about $1.5 million. And I think our latest estimate actually takes it up a little bit closer to 1.6, but the it will all be covered through SDC funds as it is a brand new park serving part of our community that is under underserved currently. In addition to that, our next major project is Deerfield Park, which actually used to be a gapped park and facility that over the past couple of years, we've actually purchased it from them. It has very outdated equipment. It's 10-plus acres, so it will require a fairly significant investment in order to bring it up to the standard that we hope for it to be. And as you can see, our unfunded project list, there's quite a bit over there. It actually should be far, far longer, but you know, that's more than five years out. So we actually got our first take, our first look at the ADA barriers list this afternoon at 1 o'clock. So as Stacy mentioned earlier, two years from now, you will see a far more significant, hopefully, projects on both ends as we will take those barriers into consideration as we prioritize additional replacement projects as we move forward. I'm more than happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Yes. Director, seeing how we're coming to fruition on our waterfront project and the wonderful improvements that are going to be down there, somewhere the improvements I'm seeing are already funded effectively by the project metrics that we've got. Do you see anything down along like the Dave Clark path that's going to possibly need to get on to this CIP down the road?
Yes. In fact, at the ADA meeting that we had earlier today, the Dave Clark path had several improvements that needed to be made. So that will be making its way on, and it will be the the low cost estimate was over $7 million specifically for that project. So well, once we were able to get in and take a look at the data a little bit more and compare that to our current deferred maintenance list, the next time around, you see us, this will be a far beefier, far beefier list.
Thank you. Other questions for Director Kim Ledain? Thank you, Kim.
No problem. Thank you.
With no other questions, we'll go to Fire Chief Shane Wooton for our public facilities section.
First off, I apologize for having my back to you. For those of you who I know, good to see you again. For those that I don't, my name is Shane Wooton. I'm Fire Chief of the Albany Fire Department. We have a few items in the CIP unfunded items. I'll highlight just a couple of them and then answer any questions that you may have. So one of the first items is the Station 12 Training Grounds, which City Manager Trozen mentioned. So currently, Fire Station 12 on 34th Avenue houses not only the fire station, but also the bus barns. So all of our transit system. So frequently, when we go out to try to do training on that site, there usually is buses wanting to come and go, and we tend to lay hose on the ground, which those two things don't match very well. So we've been working, or Public Works has been working actually really hard to try to see and locate places where the buses could go, which when that does happen, will then be working towards erecting a training tower for our firefighters to use to practice. And a training tower is just a concrete multi-story building that they're able to perform rescues off of, usually their concrete buildings, so they can drag hose and spray water in them. Currently, right now, we'll drive and send units over to Carvalis or to Polk County to do that type of training, which isn't ideal. And and as a city, as Fire Chief, I'd recommend our community that we we work towards having our own training tower within our own response area. So also, upgrade to our radio system. So I'm going to try to use an example here. So our radio system is kind of like a cassette tape. For those of you that know cassette tapes, we thankfully were able to work with Senator Byer and Gerard and Representative Kate, and they used some ARPA funding that that they received through the state, and they are helping all Lynn County fire departments go to a new radio system. And this radio system, I would probably liken to a CD. It's an upgrade from what we have, but it's not where we need to be. So eventually, what we need to be working towards is a digital system, which would be like your streaming service now. And and so we are working towards that. The cost, though, is significant to make to make that change. But we were able to take advantage of some funding from the two senators and the representative to at least take this first step towards this improvement. So cassette tape, hopefully the streaming service at some point, we're still using CDs. Also on there is replacing the asphalt at Station 12 that is in bad shape from fire trucks and buses on it all the time. And then lastly on the list is gender neutral locker rooms. So when Station 13 and 14, so 13 is the station over by Home Depot, Station 14 is the one in North Albany. Those stations were built in 1998. And in 1998, women only represented 2% of the nation's firefighters. Unfortunately, it hasn't changed a whole lot. It's women only represent 4% of firefighters throughout the nation. Thankfully, at Albany, we're at 7%. But we're not where we need to be, and we're not where the workforce is going. I don't believe that we're prepared for more and more women entering this career. So those two stations, when they were built, they have a male locker room and a female locker room. And the female locker room is basically a one-person use locker room. There's a toilet, a shower, and a locker. So only one person can use the the facility at a time. So we need to be prepared for the future, and and those two stations are not. Our new station, Station 11, and the station that we partner with Millersburg on, Station 15, we built those with the idea of a changing workforce. So rather than having individual locker rooms, it's really simple. We just have lockers on the outside and we have pods that in each pod has a shower and a bathroom. And it turns out, it's like a win-win for everybody because everybody loves privacy and nobody likes the idea of a common locker room. So you know, our our goal as a department is to work towards improving those two stations for the changing workforce. So with that, I'll answer any questions. Yeah.
So for the for the radio system replacement, you said you're going to digital. Does that price include any software and IT support you might need, or is that going to end up on the plan for the IT department?
Okay, so the money or the the $2 million that we've we've put in there, when we go to make that change, I'm sure that number's probably going to be different. And I think this, you know, going to a digital system is years down the road. Now, its effect on our current IT department, I don't know really that there is an effect on the IT department. What what the larger cost is, is the fact that we have to build out an infrastructure to be able to to transmit digitally. Currently, APD transmits digitally, and we'll be able to partner with them and and use some of their sites, but we'll have to expand our sites out as well. So I I don't believe there's an impact on IT.
Counselor Smith.
I had a related question. You answered part of it. Back on 9/11, it became well-known across the country that a lot of public safety agencies couldn't talk to each other, and that became job one for most of the country to get everybody on the same channel. I was recalling that we had done that, but that was APD. Is that correct? And has there been an upgrade to fire since then?
So after 9/11, there was a big push for for communications across disciplines. There was, unfortunately, that that push and that and the momentum from that subsided. So what we have locally is Albany Police Department is on a digital system. We're on a VHF system. We have what are called dual-band radios that are able to transmit over both spectrums. So we are able to switch over to a different frequency to be able to talk to APD. But our operations still live on an antiquated VHF system. One of the other little pieces that complicate the switch to digital is the fire service works together with other departments. We rely on mutual aid agreements and frequently you'll see other fire or other cities' fire trucks or ambulances in our town, and likewise, we'll be in their towns working together. All of our rural partners are VHF as well. So we can't just really unilaterally make that change. There's a lot of logistics that have to go in to ensure that we have that interoperability. So did I answer your question?
Yes, you did. Thanks.
And Chief, you might have mentioned, because you and I have talked about the Oregon Wireless Internet Inter Owen and the attempt to do that statewide, but that had to be abandoned because of the cost of affecting that change.
It's going digital is very, very expensive. Not only the infrastructure, but then, you know, you're having to buy a brand-new portable radios, mobile radios. And then because you're on a digital system, there are subscriber fees, monthly subscriber fees. Where we're right now, using a VHF system, we have no fees. The fee is buying a new radio. Or, you know, whatever the infrastructure breaks down. But but going digital is where everybody is all, where everybody is going, but we're not quite there yet because of the cost.
Yes. Is anybody online want to raise your hand and ask a question? I see Jared, Joe, and Theodore or Ted Bunch. Does anyone have a question? Good, thank you. I'll check with them first. Okay.
Thank you.
So I had a question for the chief.
Sure.
The training tower, you estimated 2.5 million. It's going to be on existing land. We've got to put a water infrastructure for that. Or is the water infrastructure already there?
No. So what we would do is we would build the structure on Station 12's property, which we actually have a water line that goes to the back of the station already or to the back of the property already that we use for training.
Good.
So so we just need to clear out space, find a revenue source to be able to build the tower, and then hopefully do it.
So there are grant monies available, you think, for that, or?
So typically, no. The grant monies for training towers that are out there right now are more focused on mobile towers that can be a, that can maybe go from site to site or from department to department. Well, we're the only department that needs a training tower, so there's not a lot of incentive or use of other departments. It would be repetitive. So we're going to have to get creative to look for different funding sources for that.
Thank you. Mr. Vernig.
I was going to ask, on the training tower, what does it cost you to outsource training now? I mean, you have a number that you know, that you would maybe be able to save if you didn't have to, if you had a tower to, you know, in-house or?
I really can't put, and I can't really put a number on that right right now, Mr. Vernig. I can tell you that from ease of operation, from a response standpoint, it's it's not a good practice for us to have our units training out of our community because we take a fire truck out of service, basically, to run over to Carvalis to do the drill and then come back. So employee costs, equipment costs are already fixed because they're on duty. We're paying them. We already own the fire truck. We have fuel costs going over there. The the true cost lies in that that unit is 15, 20 minutes out of town. The the true cost lies in that that unit is 15, 20 minutes out of town.
Other questions for the chief? And if there are no other questions, thank you, Chief. We'll turn to Seth Sherry for revitalization.
Good evening. Good people of Albany. Nice to see you all. Uh, you you might wonder, well, two things. A, my list is even shorter than Kim Ledain's, the park director. I'll just take the opportunity because I don't have unfunded projects to chat about the tool a little bit and why that number is a big fat zero right now. I manage economic development here at the city and I think Albany has, I I continually hear this as I travel around the state and talk with colleagues. People are taking notice that Albany is really invested in making it a place where folks not only want to work, but live and play and invest as well, their own time and money and so on. A big part of that I would, I'm proud to say, is the city's effort to create a TIF district, a Tax Increment Finance District. You know that by the name of Cara, which is our local name for that. And that's really a unique tool without adding any new taxes to the tax rolls of siphoning off some of the property tax to reinvest in a given geography to improve it. The focus of the TIF district in Albany has been urban renewal, removing blight and underutilized properties and adding a lot of revitalization back into the old heart, beating heart of the city, which sort of left like many other main streets did during the 70s and 80s as we started building malls, which are now ironically uh more empty than our downtowns are. So um with that in mind, the Cara district was created to accomplish 52 goals that were really created through a lot of community input back at the inception of this district in 2001. Some of those goals are really more activities, supporting business development and creation in in the district. But other things are very specific around historic building restoration, parks, paths, infrastructure, uh, property assembly, that kind of thing. So the district's been busy doing that. And again, I'll just note it's a very unique mechanism for funding without adding new taxes to to accomplish these goals. At at this point in the the history or genesis of this district, we're really approaching what we'd call sunsetting of the district, which is absolving it of of its duties because it's essentially accomplished all of what it or nearly all of what it can accomplish in its time. And I'll just one more note, um, this is sometimes confusing. It's not predicated to exist over a given period of time, but rather once it's spent a certain dollar amount, okay? And we're really approaching that now with the projects that are underway. Most notably, the waterfront project, as we call it. Most of you are very aware, the park's getting redone, Water Avenue itself, uh, in large part is getting redone to really create a very active vital space that the whole community and visitors can rally around and enjoy events and so forth. I I will just make a couple of notes about a few things that are in the report there that you have. I would anticipate probably by next biennium, I think this is the third or fourth one of these I've been involved in. We'll, whether it's in this meeting or another, really talk about impact overall. But i- in general, um, the district invests and does capital projects in infrastructure and partnerships with private investment. And um, while the number fluctuates somewhat, and I think by next year, it'll be actually a better ratio even. We look at it between a one and a one to six investment ratio. For every public dollar invested, there's been five or six private dollars invested, uh, which is a pretty dang good return. I take that in the tax or in the uh stock market right now myself. And then the last thing I just say on the 1, 2, 3, 4, 5th paragraph down, I we just made a note there that the final suite of projects is effectively underway now. And that's really why there isn't an unfunded list of projects. In years past, there has been a list there. It doesn't mean that the district was able to do every single thing it set out to do. Conditions change, reality change, prices have done this. But it means that with this specific tool, those those projects will not occur using this particular TIF district. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Counselor Smith.
That that prompted a question. 52 projects originally, when we're done with what we're doing now, how many of those projects will have been touched or done?
You know, that's a good question. I should have done the math beforehand. There's only a handful really that I think effectively have not been done. And those are primarily due to the reality of changing. One was, uh, I think there was a Queen Avenue overpass that was included in that original project, which is actually unfeasible. It's not really able to be done. And the other one that comes to mind, the big one, was some uh not only rehab, but complete restructuring of the canal system where the lion's share of the volume of water would have had been piped and put underwater. And then water on top would have been primarily, you know, a visual visually aesthetic. That was deemed infeasible uh due to cost as well. And in the interim, I think there was some federal regulations around power and the water sources that changed as well that made it infeasible. Beyond that, there may be one or two, but I I think we should be proud that the lion's share, you know, are being touched on.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Can you bring us up to speed on the Wells Fargo Roadblock in St. Francis?
Sure. Um, and I think we'll have a chance to talk probably more about that in the next ARA meeting as well. But um, it it's a good point because it touches on the original intent of this district. So capital projects for infrastructure as well as public-private partnerships. So the Wells Fargo is a great example of that. That was actually the first acquisition of land that the the Albany Revitalization Agency that oversees the Cara district actually acquired. It's really typical that uh TIF districts do that uh to assemble properties and and make an offering that's more palatable and developable. So that's in fact what's happening right now. The building's been demolished. It should be done here in the next couple of weeks. And uh, there's actually a listing coming on that property, probably the next week or so, uh, going out to capable developers looking to do what the council has directed us to do, which is uh increase residential density and commercial activity. St. Francis, I think they're working on permits and plans for doing that right now. Certainly been working on financing and Old City Hall's in the exact same uh bucket. I think they actually were got some approvals last night, what I understand, or night before for some of their plans.
That's that's my question. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions for Seth?
Anybody online have a question?
Peter, if I might just end with one quick note, I think it's important to recognize that a a successful TIF district should create a catalytic energy that exists beyond its its actual existence. And I think there's strong evidence to show that that has is happening and will continue to happen in this particular TIF district in the downtown core. Private investment follows typically nice infrastructure and good public investment as well. And uh, we're starting to see that and I think we'll enjoy that for years to come. Thank you.
Thanks, Seth.
You're welcome.
Okay, we're going to go back to Stacy now for stormwater and actually the last four categories, which would be stormwater, transportation, wastewater and water. Stacy?
All right. Thank you. Um, so I think I mentioned during community needs that one of the items that had been identified previous previously was the development of a stormwater fee. This happened in 2015 and since then, we have been building reserves to cover operations and maintenance costs and also to cover stormwaters portion of capital projects. This is the first CIP where we actually have stormwater projects in the stormwater section. Um, it is also the first CIP where we have a list of unfunded projects in the stormwater section. The unfunded list are projects that were identified um with completion of the stormwater master plan. This is a plan that was adopted by council last year. Um, so the the project that is included in the stormwater section, it is Stormwater Improvements Program. There is 400,000 in each plan year. Um, this project will include replacement of failing pipes that are going to be identified with our condition assessment similar to how we identify sewer pipes in the wastewater section of the CIP. There is also a project, the Center Street Stormwater Improvements. This is the Lehigh Neighborhood Center Street, south of um the highway. This neighborhood doesn't have drainage. It has curb inlets that go nowhere and it experiences a lot of flooding. And so that project is programmed in year one. I'd be happy to answer any questions that that anybody has.
Question?
Counselor Smith?
I went on a tour of the parks with Director Ledain last week and we drove down Center Street on the way to Lehigh Park. And there are some um pretty memorable potholes there. Are those related to the storm system or are they, is that just an act of God?
The the street's in bad condition. I mean, having an inadequate storm system, it does exasperate the the pavement failing. It it accelerates, so it's not helping.
Okay, that's what I thought.
Other questions? And Mayor, if you check online.
Anyone online have a question? Joe, Jared, Mr. Bunch does not. Everyone else is staff. Thank you.
Okay. All right, Stacy, onward.
Transportation. Um, so the the major, I'm not going to go over every.
One more question, please.
Sure.
Sorry about that. The coming by the Amway, not Amway, uh, train station, every year, that thing is, is that part of our stormwater system?
That's the Oregon Department of Transportation.
So it's not our, okay. That's all I wanted to know. Thank you. My phone blows up every year, so yeah. Excellent.
Okay, the transportation section. Um, I'm not going to go over every project in this section. I will answer questions. I do want to note that um all the major street projects that are identified in this chapter are primarily for arterial and collector streets. When I say that, um, I'm talking about the main roads such as Geary Street, Waverly Drive, Queen Avenue, 34th Avenue. Those are the roads that you have to take when you're going from your neighborhood to get to a destination for shopping, work, um, to go to school. This is for a number of reasons. One of them is that um it's consistent with the objective adopted in Albany's strategic plan to maintain this classification in a better or fair condition. Um, also, most of the the funding sources for transportation, um, they're restricted and can only be used on arterial and collector streets. There, the the one um project that can be used on local streets is our asphalt surface treatment program. Um, we started this program with the the last CIP. And it is, funds in the program are used to complete surface treatment on local streets. Primarily, this is going to be technology such as a slurry seal. And it's a low cost treatment. Um, slurry seal is going to be a dollar um a a square, square yard compared, or maybe it's a square foot, compared to like $40 for a full street reconstruction.
So I have a question. As we start to work on these projects, are we checking the pipes below them before we start spending money on top of them?
Yeah, we, um, during design and actually during development of the CIP, we always look at the the pipes. So we look at water, sewer, storm. And if they're in poor condition, then we typically will include a corresponding project in the other chapters so that we're not having going in and cutting a brand new street to repair a water line.
Thank you. Anybody online with questions?
So on that asphalt surface treatment program, um, I seem to recall you saying that that can only be used on roads that are like that are fair or or better, right? The they can't be used on roads that are failing. And so that's, those are not going to be the the worst roads that we have in town, right?
That's correct. It's it's a surface treatment. And the the condition, the structure of the road has to be in fair, fair condition.
So that doesn't include like an overlay or anything, does it? Or it's just the slurry seal?
It's just the slurries.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
And the other thing I wanted to point out um is there are a number of overlay projects on roads that they were reconstructed about 20 years ago. Many of these were included in the last um street bond that was passed in Albany in 1998, shortly after I started working here. And I wanted to just share, so a decision was made 20 years ago to invest more money in the structure of these roads that were re reconstructed so that in 20 years, we could do a a two inch overlay and basically reset the design life on these roads with another 20 plus years. Um, the reason we did this is um and the cost of an overlay compared to a full street reconstruction is about one fifth the cost. So full street reconstruction costs five times as much as the overlays. But in order not to lose this investment, we need to make sure that at the approximate 20 year mark, we do go back and overlay these roads. And and I want to share that just in case you drive out and you're like, why are we overlaying this road? It doesn't look that bad. There there is a reason, reason behind um the decision.
Extending the life. I think Counselor Smith had a question and someone else over here had a question.
Thank you for mentioning that, that the the 1998 street bond. I remember when 34th Avenue was like the Oregon Trail and it wasn't that long ago. That was, that was a big improvement to our our neighborhood. So that was one just comment. The other one was, we have um a number of people uh in the community who are concerned about potholes and o- offer advice that we should be fixing our potholes. We do fix potholes if people tell us where they are. And we, that's something that's a a routine part of our street maintenance program. Is that correct?
Correct.
Tell us and we'll fix it.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yeah, when we receive calls, it goes into a a a service list and and we do have a street crew that goes out and fixes potholes.
Several weeks ago, I went out with that crew and shovelled cold patch into potholes.
Commissioner Cordoza had a question.
I was just wondering, in the packet, it said that you had been considering a transportation utility fee. I was wondering if that is uh still a possibility and would that cover the local streets to keep them nice? And also, how would it be implemented if you did?
Yeah, we will be, um, we've been talking internally in um operations and engineering that we need to have a discussion with council and the public about the state of the streets and then also discuss um how to how to fund improvements to to maintain our local streets because there are some that are falling apart. So I don't have have the answers right now, but um it is on our list to probably start that discussion this summer.
And I think California has them on their registration fees. Is that how it goes?
Yeah, yeah, there's, there's lots of different, different methods to to fund. I know Corvallis has a fee.
And it would cover the local streets.
That that conversation will happen this summer and your your question about whether it would cover the local streets that, you know, there is a priority for uh for streets. And it starts with arterials, then collectors, and then no local or neighborhood streets. So obviously, the if you included neighborhood streets in that workload, that that would go up substantially.
So one thing to also, Commissioner Cordoza, is that if the state collects the money, we have to pay them a fee to get it back to us. That's the problem with that, for with me, anyway. That's my personal opinion.
I think Mr. Summers had a question.
Just about answered it. My question was, for that uh street bond we had, how long did it take to pay it off? And or are we still paying off that bond? And what does it take to deteriorate roads to prompt us to uh decide to go out for another bond if that's the mechanism we want to use to fund it? And it's, and I'm understanding that the summer is going to be a lot of that discussion.
But the hand signals I was getting from the back of the room indicate, I think, 20 years for payoff.
So is it paid off?
Hey, uh, Commissioner Verba.
So I know that we're doing a lot with the climate-friendly equitable uh communities and the climate-friendly areas. And so I see a lot of underfunded projects here related to bicycle, pedestrian pathways and such. So are there other avenues for the funding to be explored as we're trying to do this planning now? Like from the states uh for grants?
Um, in in the past, we have had grants to address um like our safe routes to school grants. And then we also had a bicycle safety grant. We don't in this edition of the CIP, but we do.
We don't in this edition of the CIP, but we do seek grants to address pedestrian and alternative bicycle improvements. The other thing I would share is that for all of our street reconstruction projects, we do evaluate bike lanes and make sure that we're providing those facilities with our on our arterial and collector streets.
Great, thank you.
Mr. Vernon?
That's where we could get some ample. But it hasn't been. So I got, I might have to give you a call about those potholes, by the way. The 3% on the on page 48, that that's going to be kind of low now, right? The inflation adjustment?
Yeah, it is low. I'm trying to find.
But that'll be adjusted every year in accordance with the ENR record anyway, so.
And Counselor Montague had something over here.
Counselor Montague.
So I was going to ask this in the ADA section. When you're doing ADA upgrades to sidewalks and curbs and stuff, do you also evaluate the street and try to, I mean, I know you do the pipes underneath, but are you trying to do kind of everything at the same time? Or do you, is it that you do them separately?
We actually do it in reverse. So anytime we reconstruct a street and that can be a full street reconstruction or an overlay, we always evaluate the corridor for accessibility. And if we identify barriers such as an ADA ramp or transit stop, then we reconstruct that to meet ADA as part of the street project. We haven't had enough funding in our accessibility section yet to really, I guess, reverse that review, but I suppose we will.
Other questions and mayor, if you check online?
No hands raised online. Oh, Commissioner Cardoso has a question.
So far, as the ADA on Airport Road, is that what's going on there for many, many months? Or is that something else involved there? On Airport Road in in Pacific, right in the corner?
Oh, that's an Oregon Department of Transportation project. And so they are doing the the ramps to meet accessibility and they're doing signal improvements to add a protected left turn lane because there are there has been a lot of crashes at that intersection.
I live in East Albany. I know, I mean, people turn and they just turn without, you know, but so it's taken a long time, though. Any idea why it's taken so long there?
It's the supply chain issue. I think it was the cabinet that was required for to complete the construction had a long lead time.
Okay. Oh, Mr. Vernon.
What's entailed in a quiet zone at the railroad crossings?
Oh, um, you know, I don't have all that information. I, I know that we, it came up at a couple council meetings ago. But in order to get a crossing designated as a quiet zone, it's quite a process. We have to work with the Oregon Department of Transportation as well as the railroads that are associated with the crossing. I think the project that you see.
Page 72.
On the unfunded list, it was a project that was identified in the transportation plan. So I don't have that sheet in front of me to see specifically what it was.
Page 72, Mr.? You said page 72?
Yeah. Page 72.
Oh, okay.
I mean, will they let the trains make noise or what?
And I I can't remember off the top of my head how many crossings there are in Albany, but the the cost to establish a quiet zone is is quite expensive, which.
Yeah, 15 million bucks, yeah.
So we did mention this to Senator Merkler when he was here about the crossing itself in the quiet zone and it's on his list somewhere. I haven't checked with him since where he's at with it, but we did mention it to him.
Okay, if there's no other questions for transportation, we'll move on to wastewater.
All right. So the projects that are in the the five year window include collection system rehabilitation projects. Similar to the stormwater program, these are lines that are identified during condition assessments of the wastewater system. For those who aren't familiar, our wastewater collection crews run cameras and like water hoses through the pipe and they take videos of the pipe in order to identify cracks, structural failures, and then a rating system is assigned. And that way we identify the top 25 worst pipes in Albany and then those pipes are programmed into this project. The other projects that I want to highlight in the wastewater section is there's three major facility projects. There's the third and fourth phase of the Cox Creek Interceptor and the Ferry Street Interceptor. These are high priority projects that were identified in the wastewater collections facility plan completed 2015. They are going to increase capacity in the pipes and also minimize sanitary sewer overflows that can occur because the pipes are undersized. The third phase of the Cox Creek Interceptor, that's going to get the pipe just east of I-5. And then the fourth phase will extend it under the airport to Goldfish Farm Road and that's going to help with develop development east of I-5. I probably should also mention that the funding for the projects you see in the wastewater section are primarily all, well, it is all from ratepayers. A number of these projects are eligible for SDC funding, but because we don't have adequate SDC funding, we don't have enough SDCs, they can't be applied to the project cost.
Questions?
So we use ARPA funding for the current phase of Cox Creek, correct?
Yeah, you actually, we did get ARPA funding for the current phase of Cox Creek and then.
That page two?
Yes. And then Director Chris Bailey, she was able to secure, I think it was 2 million.
Yes.
Requested funding. So we are looking for other funding sources.
So is it that we don't have enough SDCs or we don't have an SDC for wastewater?
We have an SDC for wastewater, but the majority of the funds that we collect are used to cover debt.
Okay. And then I just a comment, I'm glad to see that you're funding the lateral replacement program. Me and my neighbors took care, took advantage of that and it's a great program. So thank you for funding that.
Other questions?
Anybody online with a question?
Not seeing any, any other here?
Just wondering what happened yesterday. Weaver Lake, is that going to delay any of the progress or no?
No, for those who aren't familiar, there was a news release, there was a sewer spill resulting that happened during construction of the second phase of the Cox Creek Interceptor that is running along Waverly Lake. What happened is a a manhole cone tipped over and rock got into the pipe. It was quickly addressed. They had it fixed within 30 minutes. And they have construction methods in place to avoid that happening.
Any other questions before, Mr. Vernon?
I just had to, you explain a little bit what what's involved with the basement protection? Is that where it leaks into the somebody's basement on a leaky line or something? I'm looking at page 79.
Yes, okay. So the sewer lateral replacement and basement protection projects. So the the basement protection is we typically actually don't have any of those projects, but it would be if somebody needed like a back, they had like infiltration into their basement from a sewer line. I think we've only used it once.
As we said. That that program is for when a sewer line isn't working it's causing infiltration to a basement, not just somebody's basement.
Yes, yeah. The the funds in this program are almost, well, they're used for sewer lateral replacements. And the way that program works is there's an application that people can fill out if, when they're having problems with their sewer lateral rotor ruder or somebody, another plumber will do do a video of the line. And if they identify that there's a structural failure or if groundwater is leaking into the pipe, then it's eligible for the sewer lateral replacement program. And then they work with engineering staff to get the line replaced between the city main and the outside foundation of their house. It benefits the property owner. I mean, it, but also benefits the city because we eliminate ionized sewer or groundwater from leaking into our lines, then we have to treat it at the plant.
Can't apply for that retroactive?
No.
The unfortunate acronym for that program is SLURP. Any other question? How about online, Mayor?
Anyone online with wastewater questions?
And Commissioner Verba does have one.
Uh, thanks. So I see that for the sewer main, the timber line is underfunded. If that doesn't get funding, how is that going to impact the East Albany plans?
What page is that, Mr.?
96. It it's likely a project that would have to, you know, be funded partially by development. Our staff would have to identify a funding source for it. And we are planning to do an update to our wastewater facility plan, I think in two years. And so this project list will be updated and it will reflect like the the East Eye and the climate friendly efforts that have happened. This current list doesn't.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay. Ready to move on to water.
All right. So the projects identified in this section, they're a mix of facility projects, pipe replacement and canal improvements. Similarly to wastewater, these projects are funded from water rates and there's no projects that are covered from SDCs. I wanted to highlight the Countryman Circle Water Line. This is a project that is located outside the urban growth boundary. It is going to be partially funded by the North Albany Water Capital Fund. This fund receives revenue from customers that used to be part of the North Albany County District and the Dumbek Water District. They pay an additional fee of approximately 30 cents on their water bill. And we have about 400 customers in this program. I checked with water distribution and we have had, just in the past two years, 20 emergency repairs that we have had to do on these water lines. So it's very critical that that we we get this line replaced. I think in total, 48 repairs have had to had to be done on it. So it's probably if not the one of the, I mean, worst water lines in the city. The other project I'll highlight is the Canal Bank Repair that will take place between Fourth Avenue and Sixth Avenue. The canal in this section is deep and the banks are very steep. The wood boards are starting to fail and in order to protect the adjacent property, and then there's also utilities, we're going to reconstruct the 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 bank protection there. It'll be similar to what was constructed in front of the Vine Water Street, Water Treatment Plant between Third and Fourth Avenue. And I think that's it. Are there any questions on this section?
No questions online either, Mayor?
I don't see any questions here.
Yes, I do. Thank you. I just wanted to note, is there any? I didn't notice anything in the plan to maintain a water fluoridation system for the city of Albany.
Not in capital.
Yeah, the that that's a something that our operations folks do. Yeah, but we will continue to to add fluoride to the to the water.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I don't know if you all have noticed, but our committee member Ed Bach to my right is so committed to sustainability and he has such good eyes that he's been reading this on a smartphone. Well, if there are no other questions, thanks for your attention. I hope you found it to be a a very informative work session. And after tonight, the CIP is scheduled for a public hearing and adoption on May 24. And I would point out that a lot of people have put a lot of work into planning for our capital investments. But I want to single out Jeff Babbitt of our Public Works Department and express my appreciation to him for his diligent work and his professionalism. And if there are no other questions or no other comments, if I had the mayor's gavel, I would use it and say we're adjourned.